I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Emery will do the announcements tonight?
Okay, so for April 16th, the announcements, the MDI Wayfinding Grant Advisory Committee will hold an ideation workshop at 6:30 PM on Thursday, April the 18th, in the Great Hall at Apple Tree Arts. This event is an opportunity for residents to share their ideas about utilizing the $25,000 grant that Grafton was awarded for wayfinding. The Sustainable Grafton Committee will host an Earth Day event from 9 o'clock until noon this Saturday on the Common with over a dozen vendors, tables from the high school environmental students, activities for kids, recycling education, and we're going to have EV cars on display up there with their owners. Grafton's annual cleanup day is also this Saturday. Pick up your yellow bags at the Grafton Highway Department at 64 Old Westboro Road during the week leading up to cleanup day, or pick them up from the Garden Club at the Common on Saturday from 9 till noon. So both of those events are being held in conjunction up there. The Garden Club also will be giving out coupons for pizza and ice cream, and I think they'll have tree shoots to be given out to folks as well. It's probably a different word for that, but whatever. The Grafton Senior Center will host an open house from 10 AM to 1 PM on Friday, April 26th. The event will feature raffles, exercise demonstrations, free pizza, and information about everything the senior center has to offer. Grafton's Third Annual Fourth of July Parade will take place on Thursday, July the 4th, at 10 AM, rain or shine. The parade will stage and start at the North Street School parking lot and end at the Common nearest to the Congregational Church. Wear your patriotic gear, wave your flags, and bring the entire family for celebration, food, and fun. The organizers are currently looking for people to volunteer and participate in the parade. Grafton's, sorry, questions can be sent to grafton4thofjulyparade@gmail.com, and the fourth is the number four, and then TH. We'd also like to take a moment to recognize the passing of Barbara Brayley, who served the town of Grafton as library director from 1990 to 2002. The town offers its deepest sympathies to her family.
All right. Next up, we have public hearings. We have Class II Auto License Transfer at 2213 Worcester Street.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
The Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April the 16th, 2024, in Conference Room A, Grafton Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road, Grafton, Mass, to hear citizen comments on the application of Louis D. Sephantes to transfer the current Class II license located at 213 Worcester Street, North Grafton, to Jason Rose Kuywitz of Holden, Mass. The Class II license will remain at 213 Worcester Street. The Select Board meeting will begin at 7 PM. The Zoom link for remote participation will be posted on the April 16th, 2024 Select Board Agenda. Interested citizens are invited to attend this public hearing and offer comments in writing in person or via Zoom. Grafton Select Board, it was published Grafton News, March 28th, and April 4th of 2024, the town webpage, and the town bulletin board.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the public hearing is open. Does anybody care to speak to this transfer? Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mead.
So this location at 213 Worcester Street, which I'm actually kind of surprised nobody's getting up to talk about it, but the previous owner or whoever, you know, had it before, and I don't remember who it was, but, and it's on the license, but they stuffed probably 50 to 60 cars on that piece of property. And, you know, I went through the license transfer and everything, and there's no limit on the cars that are gonna, you know, there's no limit in the license for that piece of property. And I know we used to say that it used to be, you know, we'd give a Class II license and you had a 40-car maximum, you had a 100-car maximum, or whatever it was. But, you know, their place was an eyesore. It had cars stuffed in there, backed in, pulled in sideways, and it was awful. And I don't want that to happen again. And I wanna, I wanna put, you know, if you've got your hand up, that's fine, but I wanna put a, or you guys maybe can tell us how many cars you're gonna put on that piece of property, but I also want it on the license. So the amount of cars that you're gonna put on that piece of property. Right now, the piece of property is used from lot line to lot line. And that's another issue, but to put 50 to 60 cars on that piece of property is just not gonna happen.
Did someone want to come up and speak to that?
Sure. So I'm Jason Roskavage. How's it going?
Good.
So I'm the new, I'm gonna be taking over. So I purchased Anderson Automotive in 2019 from Toby Anderson.
Could you just quickly give us your address?
Yep, it's Jason Roskavage, 31 Jordan Road, Holden, Massachusetts.
Great, thank you.
Yep, so I'm new to this town. I've been here for five years. I purchased Anderson Automotive from Toby Anderson. If you guys drive by it, see the landscaping, see the parking lot, see the building, I'm all for renovating and keeping up with the property, the looks, going, you know, doing everything by the book. I was trying to find a closer area to run a service center out of, and I tried for two years and I couldn't, so I bought Deer Pond Auto in Lester, Massachusetts. I did a $700,000 renovation at that place. It's beautiful. I've been over here at the old Veni Auto for just three, four weeks. If anyone's driven by, I have gotten rid of all the tires, the boats, the cars, the junk, the trash, it's done and gone. I hired tree arborists, landscapers. I did everything the best I could. The owner of the property, his name is Bobby, he was involved, he helped out with everything. It looked really, really nice. So I totally understand your concern. It's not gonna happen with me. We're a little full at Anderson. It happens every now and then, sometimes the economy and stuff you can't control. So I look at cars at the auction, I get good deals on them, I find them, and I look at previous years and months to see how many cars I'm gonna buy. I rent a storage lot to keep the overflow of cars. So I spend an extra 1,500 a month, so I don't have too many cars on the property, and I have a very big property in Lester. So that will never be a problem. That will, what happened over there will never happen again. So if anyone's driven by in the last two or three weeks, they can see that it's changed, it's clean, it's nice, that's my style. You guys should know who I am with the Anderson property, and I understand the concern, and it was concerning to me too, and it's never gonna happen again. So it's a, it's a used car license and a service center. I'm gonna just do like, probably 10 cars, 10, 15 cars for sale, because I have the Anderson Automotive location, and I have a 100-car used car license in Lester. So I have plenty of space, I don't want to be overcrowded, I want it to be more of a service center. People have to be able to drive in, park, drive out. I don't even want cars in the middle. So they were parking cars next to the building, those lines are going away. There's parking on the sides, and there's parking out back, it's gonna be open, clear. I know, you know, a fire truck needs to get in and out, I'm aware of that, I used to work for Cogswell Sprinkler, and that's about it, but I'll definitely take care of it, and it's gonna be more of a service center. A lot of people are going to appointment only nowadays, so they kind of drop the car off, they leave it, then they pick it up. It's not like there's gonna be 10, 15 people waiting there. I'm sure you guys know that Mike's sold, Mike's Car Carrier Down the Road sold, and you know, that's been cleaned up a little bit and changed, and you know, that's not so busy either, so. But that's just what I wanted to say, that I'm on top of it, I'm taking control of it, and nothing to worry about.
Thank you, Ms. Cross.
Yep, no problem. Any questions or anything?
Ray, did you want to follow up?
Nope, and that's fine, you know, Anderson Automotive, I've stopped there many times, and actually bought a couple cars with Toby.
The proof is in the pudding, and that's what I am.
But again, and I saw, I've seen the work that you've done there, and that you've cleaned it up, and it's, and everything, and you know, I'm fine with that.
All right.
But I just want to say, and this is, anybody with used cars, or a car dealership in Grafton, if you're gonna put cars from side to side, from lot line to lot line, there's gonna be an issue.
Of course.
So, you know, I appreciate you telling us that, thanks.
Yep, nope, that'll be taken care of, and there's still, there's still probably, just so you know, there's still probably 25 cars there now that are the pre-existing owners. Those are gonna be picked off and sold and gone and disappear. I might put literally 10 cars over there for sale, maybe vans or something a little different than Anderson Auto, but it's gonna be mostly service. And there's only a little bit, there's only three bays, it's not gonna be a massive service business, it's gonna be a very controlled, organized service center. And I have the experience now, because I have Deer Pond Auto, which is a huge facility, and we have that running really well, so it's gonna be, it's just one service manager, which is Louis, and I have one person that's gonna run around and clean and help out, and two mechanics. It's gonna be a small, little business. They were running a multifunctional business. I understand what they were doing, and they were getting good deals on cars, they were piling up, they couldn't get parts, they were rebuilding, you know, motors and things that took a long time, and it got clogged up, clogged up, clogged up, and it was, it was the issue. That's not gonna happen with me, that's not the business I run, that's not what I do. I do more in and out, in and out, in and out, and things move very fast. They just did things a little differently, and it didn't work out, and that's why I'm taking over.
Okay.
That's about it.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, great.
So, Mr. Chair?
Just one second. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they would like to bring up with regards to this hearing? And will do we have anybody online with their hand raised?
You have no hands on Zoom.
Okay, I think we're good then.
Okay, I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
And without further discussion, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to transfer the Class II Auto License at 213 Worcester Street to Jason Ross Kuywitz. I know you just said it, I'm sorry. Of Blessed Motors, Inc., doing business as Anderson Automotive.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry.
Congratulations, thanks for coming to the meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck. All right, next up, we have a couple of appointments.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of James Benoit as an auxiliary firefighter at Station One.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Alex Dion to the position of Cemetery and Parks Summer Laborer. Can I do them together, or I'll do them separate?
Sure.
As well as, and I'll just say them, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Jake O'Brien to the position of Cemetery and Parks Summer Laborer, and I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Joe Gilbalt to the position of Cemetery Caretaker.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have our Town Council.
What up, gentlemen?
Hello.
Welcome. We're not getting charged for this, are we?
Totally not.
So it's my fault.
How are you? My name's Chris Brown, and with me is my colleague, Chris Heap.
Hello.
We're at the firm of Harrington Heap, his firm, and we've been helping you out as Town Council now for about five months. I was previously involved with the town, I helped with some construction issues with the DPW garage back in 2020, 2021, right around the time Evan was starting. So I'm familiar to the town, and familiar to your former Town Council, Jenny Kremer, who I've worked with many times over the years. And I've been doing this for about 19 years. I'm also the Town Council in Blackstone, and our firm, we have a team model, as you can see, we're here as a team. So we basically take the approach of people have specializations in different areas. We're all kind of generalists, so you know, questions about the open meeting law, public records, ethics, you know, we can all take those, but then we all have different lanes that we stay in too. My specialties are public construction, as I was here before, I also do a lot of contracts and procurement, and I'm also a labor and employment attorney as well. So, I mean, I guess what I would tell you is just, you know, our philosophy is, you know, that this is a customer service business. You know, so I take pride in being responsive, very responsive to town officials, so I think we've been able to establish a really good working relationship over the past few months. Emails are getting responded to promptly, and even when you don't like what we have to say, we will get back to you promptly with an answer, right? So I look forward to meeting you all and having a chance to talk more at Town Meeting, which I will be at, and we're working with Evan right now on the warrant for that, so. Chris, do you have anything to add?
No, just that it's a pleasure, pleasure to meet everyone tonight. As Chris said, I've been with the firm since 2005, I've been practicing municipal law ever since. I do both general Town Council work, but also lead our firm's land use practice. So I sort of regard my task to, you know, work hand in hand with Chris, potentially back him up as lead Town Council, and I've, over the past couple months, been taking the lead and working with the building commissioner and the planner, helping out in those land use and zoning areas. So, you know, just wanted to say, nice to meet everybody, it's been a pleasure working with everyone in town so far, and look forward to getting to know everybody better as we move forward.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic. Any questions? No, I just have a couple of quick ones. So you guys have been here five months, kind of early impressions, you know, how are things going? And I guess my second question is just, is there anything new in the way of, like, any significant changes or anything we should be aware of in terms of municipal law? You know, it's always changing, obviously, it's, you know, it's an evolving game, so.
Yeah, that's a very loaded question.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there's always stuff happening, and you know, I think the great thing about what our firm does is, you know, we have rapid-fire updates and client newsletters that go out at least monthly. I think when there's some, you know, important things that will happen, we will send out things more frequently than every month. So, you know, Evan's on our distribution list, we can add any of you to that distribution list as well, so you can read those updates, you know, and those are at no cost, you know, that's just the overhead thing for us that we do to keep our clients informed. I mean, I would say in terms of, you know, the major thing that's happening across the state right now, you know, is with, well, at least the eastern half of the state, is MTA zoning, which I'm sure you're all hearing about more than you might want to. You know, I mean, the great thing is that, you know, Grafton has already passed its bylaw, we got the approval back from the Attorney General's Office a couple months ago, so you've already checked that box off, which is, hasn't been easy for a lot of communities, so you're already ahead in that respect. I mean, I would say in terms of, you know, how we've found it here, I mean, the officials are very easy to communicate with, they're, everyone's, you know, they're not afraid to reach out to us, which is good, you know, and it's always, it's always a challenge when you change from one Town Council to the other. You know, I know Jenny had office hours here, we operate on a different model, like, we're not opposed to that, it's just that, you know, with the advent of Zoom and, you know, all the things that the pandemic brought us, it's very easy now to connect virtually with all of our clients. You know, we're across the state, we have, we're towns, we're Stockbridge down to Bourne, you know, so we're everywhere. And it's a large part of that is because we can be virtually anywhere when you need us, so, yeah, I would just, that's, so it's been a good experience for us so far, I think, and Chris has dealt a lot with Bob, I think, and with...
Fiona.
Fiona, yeah.
Yeah, and it's been a pleasure working with both of them. It's really been very nice so far.
Outstanding, great, great to hear. Now, Evan, from your end, is this, this is a little bit new model to Grafton, but I'm guessing not you?
No, it's very similar to council that I had in the western part of the state, but I will say, very thorough, almost too responsive. When I send an email to Chris and I'm like, okay, so I get that off my desk, and then it's like, bang, and I'm like, oh, I gotta deal with it again. But no, it's been, it's been great. I grew up in a, I had a, my parents were shop owners in the small town of Vermont, so I'm used to customer service being like, make sure you get back to people. Comes right back. You're like, oh, it's back on my flight again. But, no, it's been, it's been great. You know, I think the department heads are adapting well to this being a little bit different model, and I do, I have heard from a lot of department heads that they really like that they have individual attorneys that they're working with that have areas of expertise.
Yep.
Instead of, you know, one person that has to try to cover everything. You know, I know that Paul's been working with someone that does a lot of stuff around, you know, roads and acceptance and that process there, and I was with someone last week, an attorney last week, Irina? Ivria. Ivria, sorry. So Ivria, and she specializes and, or has a vast knowledge of cannabis and HCAs and stuff, and it was just really, it's really neat to have all these different people that have their areas of expertise, so we're really enjoying it, and I've heard nothing from our department heads other than really positive feedback, so.
Great. Well, Chris and Chris, thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you all in a few weeks.
Absolutely.
We'll be there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right, next week, some licenses. We have a one-day beer and wine license for Rushford and Sons Brew House. That's at 11 Willard Street.
I think...
Beverly, you're on mute, Beverly.
Yeah, I think she's working on it.
Yep.
Now, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. Still can't?
Yeah, we can hear you. We're good.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, welcome to the meeting.
Um, I'm at the Willard House here for, we have a fundraiser coming on April 27th, and Ashen Suns is going to give us our liquor.
Sounds great. Did you, did you want to make any remarks to promote the event at all? So it's April 27th, what do you guys have going on?
What we've done, we have gotten a very big donation that is in the works. $50 million worth of clocks are coming to the Willard in the next year or two, so we're trying to increase our endowment so we can build some sort of place to put all these clocks. It's gonna double our collection.
That is so exciting.
Isn't it exciting?
Wow, yeah, great, great stuff. Are any questions on the, the application?
No.
Seems like it had all the right information.
Yeah, it was well done.
Are we all set?
Ms. Foley.
Sorry, were you gonna say something?
No, are we all set?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna vote on it unless you had anything else that you would like to say.
No, I think I'm good.
All right, thanks so much.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Rushford and Sons Brew House at 11 Willard Street on Saturday, April the 27th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much for coming to the meeting, appreciate it.
Okay.
Good luck with your event.
Bye.
All right, next, we have a one-day beer and wine license for the Grafton Men's Softball at 115 Ferry Street. Do we have anybody here?
I think so.
Come on up.
I'm just representing Joey, because Joey's sick today.
Great.
We just wanted to get a license to have a few beers after softballs on Sunday mornings. Been down there for 50 years so far, we're just kind of trying to get it doing it the right way now, so.
Great, coming into compliance.
You're doing it, you're doing it the right way, so you're actually getting a license these times. Not saying there wasn't beer there before.
I'm not, I do this.
I really do appreciate you coming in, though. Yeah, anyways, any questions on the permit?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Grafton Men's Softball at 115 Ferry Street every Sunday from April the 28th, 2024, through September 15th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is granted, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, enjoy your softball.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have an annual outdoor music license for the Holden's Sunflower Shanty, and they are on Wesson Street. Any discussion? Did you want to?
You mean to jump in?
Get this kicked off?
Sure, yeah, no problem. So this is on the agenda, a little bit prematurely, through no fault of our staff, our staff did exactly what they've been instructed to do, which is, when we get a license like this, we're trying to be as business friendly as we can, and it goes right on. In this case, though, there is a waiting period, or an appeal period for the special permit, which ends today, technically at midnight. So we don't even know if someone has filed a complaint. And so what we're asking to do is just postpone this for two weeks till we get to the next meeting. We need to make sure, one, that there was no appeal, and two, that it gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. That's one of the requirements, and Grafton's been a little soft on that over the years, and that has definitely caused us agita at times. And so the one lever that the board has to make sure that it gets recorded is that there is other licensure that goes along with that, so we get it recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and then move on to the licensure for the rest of it. So, yeah, sorry, it was a little bit quick to get on the agenda. It also doesn't help that it's a holiday Monday, so it has to be posted by Thursday. It came in at like 11, and the deadline's at 12, so I think staff were just scurrying to try to make sure that it made it, so. That's all I have for that.
All right, so is there any discussion on that? Yeah, just a couple of questions, and maybe just explore a little bit of my curiosity. So what happens next? So it gets, there's no appeal, assuming there's no appeal. What exactly, not just for me, but for those that might be curious listening in?
So it needs to get recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and it gets attached to the deed on that property. And then the planner will issue the order of conditions, which is attached, let me back up, the order of conditions is part of what gets recorded at the registry, but she will then send it out wide to everybody, because we know there's no appeal, right? So there's no appeal, that'll go out, you'll have access to all of that, obviously, and you can use that to kind of frame your conversation around what the license will do and won't do, right?
Do we have any ability to adjust anything?
Oh, yeah.
So you say order of conditions.
Yep.
2:00 in the afternoon, 6:00 at night, Sundays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, those things, music, beer, whatever.
Yeah, specifically, I had met with Fiona a number of times. This was a little bit complicated of us, of a decision letter to write, even though it seems like it should be straightforward, but there was public input, and there was a lot of different things. And so what she and I had discussed, and the planning board ultimately agreed to, is that they did not set hours as far as music, entertainment, liquor. They can do that, however, you're the licensing authority. And so rather than include that in a special permit that is very difficult to change, you leave it as part of the entertainment license and liquor license, because you folks have the ability at any meeting where it's properly posted and all the rest of it, to say, you know, 9 PM's not working, we need it to be 8 PM, or 8 PM's working fine, it can be 9, no one's got a problem, can go either way. But you have a much more dynamic and reactive process at your fingertips than the planning board does.
And that's two weeks from now. That's what we will discuss in two weeks.
Yep.
Thank you.
For, just for entertainment, the liquor license came in after the last close of of, um, our, our period and needs to be advertised as a public hearing, so it's gotta go in the paper and it's all that. So I don't think that comes before you until May. But that's not anything we can control, that's just the timeframe that's attached by the state for liquor licenses.
Yeah. As long as we're moving as quickly as we can, makes sense. But it also makes, I don't wanna be voting on anything until we do.
We're, we're a little too quick in this case, but we're gonna be regular quick at our next meeting.
Uh, no, it's great, uh, cause I actually hadn't understood the next steps and what our, uh, part of the process was, so it was good to have this conversation anyways.
Great.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Ms. Foley.
Just comment, if you look under finding forty, um, it does indicate what Holden's, you know, agreed to in terms of the times, which is in, it doesn't reflect up in the application. And that also might help the, the butter who had wrote to us because they specifically just write Friday, Saturday. Um, and then Thursday, Sundays, just in the fall. The finding number forty, or Mark, if you wanna look at that, it kinda gives us some clearance on that, or more information on that.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, thanks for directing us to that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that that information obviously carries into the new packet, um, and then any other ancillary information we get between now and then.
Makes sense. All right, we will take that up in a couple of weeks then. Uh, next up we have a discussion on the Fourth of July parade. Good evening.
Good evening. Justin Stone, I'm here with, uh, Bob DeToma and we lead the Fourth of July Planning Committee every year for the last couple of years. Uh, we just wanted to come in and do one more plug. Thank you for reading the announcement earlier, uh, for our parade this year. It is starting at ten o'clock as normal. It'll be the same parade route, so we'll see it coming down from North Street on the Commons. Uh, rain or shine, we actually got a, a, a big boost last year because we were one of the only towns locally that did the parade. Uh, the weather held out for us, it was great. So that was awesome. This year, we're also looking to get, uh, more activities on the common itself. Uh, we've got a couple of ideas that we're looking to, uh, see if we can move forward on. Uh, the, the pizza last year from, um, Anzio's was great, they sold out. And then we also had Kona Ice on the, the common as well and they did great, so we're looking to get them back as well. We always need volunteers, both with the planning and then we're also looking for anybody that wants to participate. So I've already sent out rounds, if you've participated in the past, I've already sent out emails asking for you to participate again this year. But if you know anybody else, uh, Evan, if you wanna, you know, come out and drive a float or something like that, love to have you out there.
Drive a fire truck.
Perfect.
I think, I think I can pull that off.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll be allowed.
You can hang on the back like in the Grinch costume.
I have access to keys, so.
So, um, yeah, looking to grow the parade every year. We're always looking to add new things and, and stuff like that, so. Uh, open to any suggestions and, and please, uh, spread the word.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Are you getting a response on, uh, for the, your request for people to volunteer?
We, uh, so the volunteers are tough. Uh, we get people that, that say they'll wanna volunteer and then, getting them to actually put in the time is, is sometimes a little painful. Uh, so we are looking for somebody that's willing to come in. Uh, we either need help the day of, um, with setting up the activities and, and things like that. Uh, but we also need help with some of the planning stuff. We only do what we have the bandwidth for. Uh, there's only a couple of us that, uh, are, you know, attend and, and work out a, a lot of these details and stuff like that, so. We're only as big as, as, uh, we only do the parade as big as what we can handle, to make sure it's a success. So we'd love more volunteers, we'd love more people to actually come in and help planning wise, but we'll take more on the day of as well.
All right, call is out. Volunteers needed.
Definitely.
Any other questions, discussion? Great.
Awesome.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Last year, it was terrific.
Yeah, it was great.
It's gonna be better this year.
I bet it is.
I'll grab my truck and meet him out there.
I'm thinking, uh, the new brush truck, be a good time to show that out.
Sure. You wanna ride on the top?
Yeah.
Need to do Kramer from Seinfeld?
Can I stand the ladder? I'll ride on the top of that. All right, um, we have, uh, what three Worcester Street up next, uh, and I think Evan's got, uh, something for us.
Uh, yeah, so I'm gonna show you, um, briefly here, once I figure out.
So just as a, uh, I guess a recap, there was a, a ton of discussion, uh, sort of towards the end of, um, our last meeting, uh, I did a straw poll for sort of what direction broadly we wanted to go in and I think, uh, four of us were in favor of re-lining the parking lot and, and moving forward with some, um, sort of immediate relief to, to try to, add as much parking as we, as we could, but retaining the, uh, the existing structure. Um, so, uh, what I wanted to do tonight was basically just, uh, have Evan present, um, a mockup of, uh, what he thinks is the appropriate, um, layout for parking, um, and then just have the board vote on, uh, directing staff to just move forward with it.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I got, I have this up. This is a mop, mockup in our, uh, near map software. Um, and so what I tried to do here is work with the schools on protecting any areas that they may have that they need to have access, pretty much unfettered access to. Um, I know that the board, uh, at their last meeting discussed parking in front of some of the bays. Um, I think I figured out a way that we still have spaces, but also don't directly block those doors. I think that's the best case scenario. Um, and I also, as I said at the last meeting, tried to protect the tree. Um, I don't think you gain anything by taking the tree down as far as the layout goes, but we, we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, so you'll see what I did. We had, uh, we have essentially three line spaces, actually four line spaces currently, although this one's a little wonky and causes us some agita. A couple of weeks back, we had somebody park vertically and then couldn't get in, to the, the, uh, building. So what I tried to do is shift that risk kinda down a little bit. So we've got four spaces here at an angle along that left side of the parking lot. Uh, we then went to parallel parking bays here. These bays are all eight feet wide by twenty feet long. Um, and then I had originally put six bays across the back. However, in talking to Frank Rothwell, they do have a dumpster back there that needs to be able to be accessed. Um, and so what I did was take two of those spots away to fit their six yard dumpster here and that, that dumpster's to scale. Um, but it would be angled here, cause the tr- the way the truck comes in during the day.
So if somebody's parked in that, uh, last spot there, um,
Here?
Yeah, um, about in the dumpster. Does that dump, dumpster get picked up regularly?
It does, but it's during the day. So if we have our restrictions that we'll talk about a little further, shouldn't be an issue.
Got it.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure the truck could get down there if there were anybody in the parallel bays there too, so.
Right. Yep, it's, it's not for, uh, daytime operations when they're in full swing using the building.
Yep.
Um, and then we were able to put, uh, three more spots here angled. Um, and so if the spots are eight and a half feet wide and eighteen feet long, um, three spots is just about what you can get without hitting the sidewalk that's right here. Cause you've got, got a sidewalk here to take into account. Um, I did look at shifting this a little bit, but, uh, because the way access works, it, it didn't really gain anything. So, um, you've essentially gone from four spaces to sixteen spaces. Um, I think that it would be wise to select a timeframe, which we had discussed, uh, which would probably be something, uh, like no public parking from six AM to three thirty PM or whatever the schools kinda block off there that's reasonable.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Um, and then, you know, um, we create the appropriate signage. DPW does all the, the signs in-house, so I kinda just tell them what we're, what we're trying to achieve and they, they know how to make a sign, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's what we would be looking at, but this is obviously an example. Uh, it doesn't have to be the end all be all. Um, the lot is a little funky, so you, you kinda wind up with a couple of, of obtuse corners there to deal with.
Uh, yeah, it'd be good to, um, just signal to people with some signage that there is, uh, additional parking out back.
Yep.
So as, you know, people are looking at, driving by, basically, they know that there are those spots right up front, but also there are, uh, a few out back. Um, any? Questions or?
So if we took the tree down, we'd get four more spaces probably, right? Across the front?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Is this inclusive of a renovation too, or this, you're just adding more spots?
Um, this is just adding spots. This is just adding spots. I think that, you know, if, if the community, if, if we see that it's used consistently, then I think you would look at whether you're gonna repave or do anything like that, but until, in my opinion, until you, you see that there's proof of concept, then, you know, you know, I wouldn't wanna see us spend a ton of money.
So in effect, this is sort of a compromise between renovating the building or fixing the building up, bringing up the standards codes, or knocking the building down and making a parking lot. This is kind of like, well, it's cleaned up as best we can.
Is, right.
And add sixteen spaces.
Yep, correct. Yep, so we get some public parking out of it. School department doesn't need to build a new building. Um, and then schools would be able to, um, you know, move forward with their doors, their painting, their repointing. Um, and I, I think if you've been up there, Frank has done a pretty good job so far of cleaning it up.
Yep.
He, he acknowledges fully that there's a ways to go, but I mean, just in the short period of time, I think it's a, it's a nice change.
Looks much nicer for sure. Took all the vines off the building, cleaned up that whole side, side area.
Yep, yeah.
So it's a, it's a minimal nominal cleanup, adding spaces. If it's, if we find that gets, that gains traction, then we think about doing something more.
Yeah, either paving a lot as it is, or you would say, wow, this is very needed and we're gonna do something else. That, that's kinda what I took away from all of the board's discussion up to this point.
Does that, um, resonate? I mean, does that make sense to everybody?
This is, yeah, it's exactly what I wanted to see, just see how many spots we can get in there.
Yeah.
Save the tree and see how the usage looks.
Yeah. Uh, I was, I was in favor of, uh, taking the tree, but, um, now that I see it, um, and also understanding, you know, if, if this works out, this doesn't have to be the final design for the parking layout. We could always take the tree down, reconfigure things, you know, um. This seems like it's fairly accommodative and it's something we can do really quickly, which was something that I was interested in, so that we can give some relief to the businesses, which really, you know, they have a legitimate, um, concern and need. So, um, this, this sort of does everything that I was looking for. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jefferson. One question, I don't really expect you to have the answer to it, uh, cause it's pretty impromptu. Um, as we are, and again noting that we are getting up into the, the good clean out season and, uh, I would expect, some of these things to, to progress a little more quickly and, and the cleanup be nicer. That, a lot of the underbrush is really tied into that chain link fence along, uh, where we have those parallel spots. Have the, the schools, school department expressed any concern about having to replace that or, um, you know, as they clean up some of those spaces there? I know it's, it's not like a big money topic or anything, but.
We honestly have not had that conversation. So, um, I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm sure that, um, I, I don't think that that would be unexpected or unwelcome. They've, both Frank and Jay are real easy to, to work with.
Well, some of the fencing's been taken down.
Yeah.
Yep.
I was gonna say it's.
Yep. But I'm not, there's still some wonky, as it goes towards the back.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if the plan is to replace that or if it's, you know, un- unnecessary now that it's not a fire department. Um, but I can certainly, you know, reach out to them and ask.
I'm not concerned either way, I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna have cars paralleled right up against it, um, you know, right up against this side here.
Be nice for that.
Look at this, this guy's gonna get towed, he's not in the spot. Um, but yeah, you can see it, the, the, oh, you know, the, the overgrowth here.
Yeah, it creeps.
Yep. Creeps around.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair? So is, is, is the, the goal here to turn over operations of this building to the school department?
I think we're already there.
I would say.
Well, that would be part of our vote, to, to turn over the operations of.
In, in, yeah, in my opinion, you know, I'm, I'm helping with layout and that stuff, but they're, they're gonna do their own procurement, they're gonna fix the building, they're gonna do their capital renovations, they're gonna do all of that. But, I mean, it depends on how you, anyway you cut it, it's still a public building, so.
Yeah, but if we, if, if we keep ownership of the operation, then they have to come back to us every time they wanna do something. So if we turn the operation of that building over to them, they can move along with their renovations and just get it done.
Uh, sure, I, I guess I understand that, but, um, uh, in my mind, I'm not sure, uh, in practice, it's been happening already, so I'm not sure.
Well, the only reason is it was never the goal for it to be that way.
Sure.
So, if anybody has hesitation, that might be one reason why. I'm not saying I do or I don't, just saying that would be one reason.
Yeah. Well, Ray, as you always say, you can make a motion anytime.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Phil.
I move that the board vote to, uh, turn over operations of Three Worcester Street to the school department, uh, for them to renovate and use the building, uh, as they see fit.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'm not sure.
So.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Ms. Foley.
Uh, so turnover operations being essentially doing what they've been doing, and ultimately we, the town side, still retains, um, overall control over it, or just, it's a school department building?
So the municipality owns it?
Right, 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 I understand. But, you know, it's a, it's then a school department building?
It's a school department run building.
Hmm, right.
So what hasn't been happening, I think, is because the, uh, this, this is my opinion, but the, the school's been using this for their equipment. Um, but the building itself hasn't been maintained. So what we're, I think what we're saying here is that the, we'll do the lining and that's Evan's part and he sort of presented that, so we can vote on that tonight. But if what we're saying is the schools are gonna be, um, responsible for maintaining the roof and the pointing and like redoing those, um, the bay doors that they wanna do, all of those projects, um, it makes sense for them to just operate the building and be responsible for that stuff sort of more officially, so that it's just clear who is responsible for the operations of the building. I think is what Ray's getting.
That's exactly what it is.
So then it becomes a school building?
Yeah.
Okay. Under their jurisdiction.
I mean, again, uh, I'd argue that it already has been one. Um, and, you know, we do this all the time, so this building used to be a school, right? We, uh, no longer use it, that's a school, it became a municipal center.
So I went here.
Did you really go here?
Seventh, eighth, and ninth grade.
Shut up. Uh, so, you know, I, I see this as a, as a really positive thing. You know, this is us making a commitment to a building, you know, using it to its potential and, um.
Well, we're also making a commitment to the school department that we're gonna, that they can do what they wish with the building as far as their renovations.
Absolutely. Um, and we get to save a bunch of money in the, in the process, so. Um, any additional, yes, Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, just, um, adding on, I, I, I agree, I see it in a similar fashion. I think, um, some of the disrepair, the, the building and the lot finds itself in now is just that it was, it kinda fell into, into a crack, um, where, it wasn't, I mean, it was unofficially a, a school facility, but it's still a town facility. Yeah, and, and, and there was a gray line and a gray area as to who, you know, really had to maintain and care for it. And, um, in my impression of, of this vote is that we're going into it with, you know, just defining that boundary better. Um, and e- empowering the schools to, I guess, maintain it on their own. I mean, there, it, it, there's still the checks and balances. I, I, uh, working with the school committee and, and budgeting and all that stuff, um, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's just clarifying who's supposed to be managing this, this facility, really good.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
I, I guess I wasn't anticipating that, so, and I'm not sure that I can't get there. I'm, I don't think I'm there right now from the context of it probably was intended to be that way. Is there a way that we can hold this for a couple of weeks and just let me do some research? If not, that's cool. But I'd like to, you know how I like to do my field trips and have a better, fully formed sensibility of where I would land. This gives me a little time to get there and spend some time there and visit with a few people, understand it better. If not, that's fine too.
That's a perfectly legitimate question. Um, how's the rest of the board feel about that?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, we're just turning over the operation of the building. I mean, we're not, we're just, that's all we're doing. We're just telling the school department officially from the slipboard, this is your building. You can renovate it, you can do whatever you have to do to, to operate this building. And that's it. I mean, it's not a, it's not rocket science here, but, you know.
Sure. Um, I guess, uh, yeah, but I just wanna talk to the question of, uh, ho- holding off a vote for a couple of weeks. Just, this is sort of a new, uh, topic, so, you know, I, I respect her.
Thank you.
Need for maybe some additional time and, and whatnot.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Um, yeah, I, I understand where Mr. Allen was coming from completely. Uh, it's not the vote that I expected to take tonight, but I support the direction of the project and, and that mov- movement. Whatever. Anyways, um, if you wanna, if you wanna roll nasty and head over there and do some field tripping, we can do that.
You remember that, yes, I do.
Um, you know, and I'm fine, uh, pushing that off. You know, and I'm fine uh pushing that off if that makes you more comfortable, is there any interest in at least voting to move forward with the line striping? Um so we can get that in the queue and get the signs potentially in the works and on DPW's radar.
That I could probably do tonight.
Uh yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, I was gonna abstain if we were gonna vote on the building tonight because I don't feel that I'm ready, um but certainly I want to move forward with the the parking as it's outlined here. And then if we can just have some more time to, I just wanna mull it over a little bit more.
Sure, uh so Ray, if you wanna um rescind your motion, then we can pick it up in a couple of weeks. Or if you don't want to rescind your motion, we can vote on it.
I'll rescind the motion, I don't understand it. But I'll rescind the motion because I'm not sure what you're gonna go look at. I don't know what a visit to this site is going to change from turning this over to the school department. You could go look at it after you turn it over to the school department, just let them do their, what they want to do, that's all. I don't get it.
Uh I agree with you that I think it's important to give a clear signal to the school department that um this is the expectation of the board. But um I also, you know, if somebody needs more time, to me, I don't see any rush for this particular vote. I am more uh, I have more of a sense of urgency for the the parking because that is the underlying issue that the businesses came to us with, is that they need additional parking and that's something that we can.
Definitely in favor of the park.
So is that you saying you're gonna rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my second.
Alright, then we're rescinding, um can I get another motion?
Yeah, and I'll just to jump in for Ray, I I've already seen the building, I went a while ago, but it's not that, it's just uh the idea of wrapping my head around, I I know it seems clear cut to you, but you know, everyone kind of thinks in different ways and um just getting more information about like what that means before I decide that I'm gonna handing this, maybe it's not handing it, but that's how I feel. Um that being said, Mister Chair. I move the board vote to move forward with the improvements to three Worcester Street parking as presented by the town administrator.
Second, I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Alright, can I discuss? Uh I just wanna put it out there, this is this is a satellite image of of what it is, so if we wind up with two spots in a corner or something like that, when we get on the ground and clean stuff up and find more pavement might not be a hundred percent, but that's the intent is what we're gonna end up with here.
So you're saying there might be more?
I'm saying I'm not an engineer.
There's probably two spaces between the tree and the building.
Maybe, so I just want to put it out there that this is a best faith effort. Although I did have a great time learning this new software and figuring out how to draw all over stuff, so.
Looks great.
Thanks, I was I was real proud of myself today. All kinds of people have no interest in this.
Love the color coding, um solid option, uh I think we have faith in your your opinion. And solid off the cuff motion on that one, I just wanted to call that out.
I was writing as Ray was talking, just kidding.
Not many people do that.
All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, the motion carries, uh next we're up uh on the ban for the fire truck, uh over to you, Mister Braster.
We're gonna bond a fire truck, not banning it.
We're gonna ban it.
Very good, so what this is, um you know, we continue to look at bonding options and sometimes we delay bonding uh or sometimes we'll expedite bonding depending on where the interest rates are. Essentially, we're always shopping for money and the cheapest money right now is in the the bands, which is a bond anticipation note. Bond anticipation, oh, bond, a lot of S H's all of a sudden, bond anticipation notes are short term borrowing. They're usually six months or a year, um and they are really used most of the time to kick the can down the road until you've got a project completed, so let's say we're gonna do George Hill Road. Um and that's seven million dollars, the first payment we have to the contractors two point five million, we will ban that two point five million and then ban the next two point five million and five and then ban the last two. And then when we have the whole package, we go out to the bond market. Because now the more money you put out in one bond issuance, the better rate you're going to get. Uh plus you'll get bond proceeds, bond proceeds is basically like a cash kickback to the town because you're you're borrowing a large amount of money. And then usually what we'll do unless we've discussed otherwise at town meeting, um that that bond proceeds goes right back to the principal and pays down the money you're gonna borrow, alright, that makes that makes sense. Um so what we're doing here with this particular particular fire truck, this is engine three that we've been talking about for years now that we've already ordered, it's it's supposed to come in, okay, engine one, okay. One of the engines.
Not the one you're gonna drive.
Is gonna be Essentially, what we're doing is we're reissuing a ban till we get to the point where we can bond. Which in this case might be never, because the ban rates are so good compared to the bond rates that with this small amount of money, we might just ban it over and over again until we pay it down.
So you can just roll into new bans until it's done?
You could continue to do that, a lot of times that's not av- advantageous, but it depends on, there is a a a break even point in which the bond rate over a certain amount of money is gonna gonna get you a little bit farther down the road. But in this case, we're just keeping this uh ban alive.
And our bond analyst basically will track that also that it's budgeted for and all that, yeah, okay.
Yep, so and they are the ones that really guide us on you should ban this one more time, or this ban is coming due, you're not ready to bond for another three months, so let's do another short term borrowing to get us to what we're gonna do, because the the idea here hopefully is that we will take, say, George Hill Road and anything else that we talk about and we'll wrap it all up into one so that we get a better rate and a and a better bond proceed number. And save the taxpayers as much money as possible with that borrowing.
And is is that why I noticed it was like the the interest was payable at the end of the, I guess it's the ban period then, okay, I was wondering why would we do that?
Cause you can also pull it out early from the ban, so then that changes the amounts that you would pay at the end there. It's like a reverse car loan. Instead of paying the interest upfront, you paid at the.
Well, that's why I was curious why never has that happened, right?
Yeah, well, that's the municipal world, we do everything backwards.
So Mister Chair. I move the board vote to award Unibank for savings the six hundred thousand dollar bond anticipation notes to be issued April twenty third, twenty twenty four for the purpose of acquiring fire equipment and authorize any and all actions necessary for the issuance of the notes.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, others in favor? The motion carries. Uh next up, we are uh considering a renewal on the Tufts biomedical consultant contract.
I can do this one as well if you'd like, so this is, I don't want to say boilerplate, but it's pretty much boilerplate, this is same uh agreement that we continue to do with Tufts. Uh to follow the NIH guidelines, so nothing earth shattering, it's just just normal course of business.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Mister Fuller?
I move the board vote to renew the contract with Colleen Driscoll for biomedical consulting services at the Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine, Tufts University.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, others in favor? Next up, we have a contract with RDLA for ninety five North Street.
Yep, so this is um, we as we continue to work on that on the park, ninety five North Street. We are outside of the contract period for RDLA, they are asking to, and we are asking to extend the contract at no additional charge. So there's no money involved in this, it's just renewing the timeline out so that we can continue to work on this part.
Makes sense, any questions?
Mister Chair. I move the board vote to extend the contract with RDLA for architectural services at ninety five North Street.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, others in favor? Motion carries, and next up, we have the citizen petitions. Uh do we have any of the petitioners here?
It's okay, Chad, you count.
Chad, we missed you, man.
Well, I think it's me, I'm I'm the I'm the next one on the list here anyways.
Yeah, we kind of lumped them all.
I've been done uh Elmarock Estates for a few years now and uh we finally with Fiona's help, Amber's help and Katrina's help and several of of the other board uh boards in town have finally put together a full package, I think it was submitted in your uh uh package tonight, it's probably seventy pages of plans and letters and miscellaneous memos. Uh finally, we are uh at the finish line for uh street acceptance. And uh we're looking to uh the town to take over the infrastructure of the roads finally. And uh they told me to come if you had any questions and hoping hopefully I can answer any of the questions that you may have. Uh although there was seventy pages of documents, so I'm not too sure.
And I, Mister Chair, I think Mister McCusker is also uh joining us via Zoom. He's been an integral part of that process.
Absolutely, um any questions from the board?
All the bounds are in, everything's done?
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Bill, did you want to come in and uh speak to the agenda item? You're more than welcome.
Uh I'm I'm here mainly if you have any questions, um you know, as Chad said, it's been through the process, I think we're uh you know, we're at that end game now.
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like you uh worked with all the relevant boards and committees. Did my best to wade through the seventy pages.
It's pretty pretty well vetted by uh all the boards and attorneys and whatnots and engineers, of course, so, yeah.
Absolutely, okay.
Mister Chair.
I have the motion, uh Mister Fuller?
I just have a question related and not entirely, but how is it going with like the flooding over there, do you know, on that like the Echblah landing area, the Grafton Land Trust?
The Echelotin Landing, I'm not aware of that.
Just behind your.
Just behind that, I haven't heard any.
I think that's a different.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, that's not Elmarock. Is that still water?
Elmarock's just a little bit for for the road.
Oh, the other subdivision down the street? Okay, okay. You had me, you had me though.
Uh alright, then I will take a motion.
Uh Mister Chair.
Mister Fuller?
I move the board vote to approve the road acceptance at Elmarock Estates and sign the milers.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, others in favor?
Uh thank you all.
Thanks so much. Alright, we did have uh citizen petitions, um did anybody want to discuss any of those?
I did.
Alright, go for it.
Can William, is is Mister Bruni on?
Uh Mister Bruni is in the meeting, his microphone is off, though I'm not sure if he's currently on his computer.
Great, oh fantastic, okay, um would you like to uh speak to your citizen petitions?
Uh well, we got three of them there, hello everyone. We have, we have three of them there, um one, one that is speaking to uh duration of terms, um another one around other businesses and then lastly around a review. Around reviews, a summary of reviews, I didn't know if there were any questions from the
Well, I think this is a good opportunity, um so you know, these are going to town meeting, um these are uh essentially your petitions, um so this is a great opportunity if you would like to basically walk us, the board, a- as well as the um town and the public uh through, you know what the intention of the um petitions is, what the rationale is and um, you know, uh sort of just help us understand what these are about and and what this will do um if they are passed.
Okay, so a lot a lot of questions at once, those are great for me to know so I can be prepared for May. But uh in the in in the in the in the short term.
Unfortunately, you happen to be in our meeting tonight, though, so.
Yes, that that's that's understood, I, yeah. Uh so let's take one petition at a time and one question at a time. Would you mind repeating those questions so I can jot it down? I apologize, it's been a long day.
Uh I didn't mean to pressure you at all, um this this is an opportunity for you to basically just tell us what it is that you're trying to do. Um and to keep to tell us what what you what your intention is behind these petitions essentially. So what are what is graph, what are Grafton voters voting on?
Yes, okay, so I have one in front of me here that looks at um changing, changing the duration of of the terms, so and this is for our charter. And looking looking at the charter, um I asked that we change the uh terms from a three year, from a indefinite to three year terms for the uh inspector of building, wire inspector and inspector of uh gas appliances. Um so just review, going through our charter, looking at the different ones. And the the intent, the the intent of this in in short is to provide an opportunity for someone to be in the role, I noticed that there are some roles that are three years and then there are very few that are indefinite. So it gives the opportunity for someone to actually have time in the role, have an impact, and also have a chance to pass it on, but it also doesn't allow things to be um trying to find the right right word, calcified, where someone can be in a role for uh in indefinite. Um which which from from my opinion and those who signed it uh there there can be um calcification of power and where it sits, so. So the the research I've done kind of dr- drove the three petitions that I came up with. Both through forums that I've 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 put out there. Through at least two separate years of information from from online sources and then also private uh conversations that people have 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 had with me. So that's that's what's driving uh this one, is 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 to have an opportunity for change if things are 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 not working the way that we would like, um that there be a regular cycle for that. So that was the that was the first one there.
Alright, so um I'm gonna pause you there if it's alright, um does the board have any questions?
I have a question. So serve three years, that's it, or serve three years and can serve another three years? If appointed, or three and and done, term limit? Which is it?
That is a great question, to be honest with you. I don't have the guidance for that, what I'm asking for is three years and then I almost, I almost seek seek the information from you all how that works, three years and then you're done, is is that the and and you're done, I don't know how it works with the other ones, for example, um I think the Board of Assessors, you you have three years, so how is that one done?
They, those are three year terms uh of appointment and they can serve for as long as they are reappointed for.
Okay, so understanding what that process is, so this would be maybe phase one, I'll be I'll be back at it again, but for changing that to to three years and follow the model, we can we can start with that.
Might interject, you might, you know, maybe similar to the town administrator, it's a three year contract and then.
We we don't have the legal ability to have a contract with a building inspector, you'd have to continue to change the charter to allow for that. But I don't know what the legal ramifications of that are, there are only certain things in master and law that you can have a contract for. Uh if you remember back at town meeting, I had to add it so that we could have a contract for the assistant town administrator um and the lieutenant at the police department deputy chief. So you'd have, there's a different process in order to do that.
So are there any, I don't know if it should be, just checking it, or my, this is my personal question, I guess. Are there are there any town employees that function on a three year type cycle that aren't under contract? Or this would mean setting precedent?
Not that I'm aware of. I I don't, I don't believe anybody is reappointed every three years, the Board of Assessors is a board much like yourself. Who has three year terms, that's why three year terms come into that. Contracts are generally three years, but uh there are many communities throughout the Commonwealth that have town administrators on five year terms, four year terms. So it really, really depends on the local municipality. Um I'm not aware of any other town that has building inspectors on a three year term. Doesn't mean they don't exist, uh but I I've never run into that in my career.
Yeah, Mister Bruni, um so your, if I can get this straight, your your goal here is to, is they serve for three Your, if I can get this straight, your, your goal here is to, is they serve for three years and then that's it?
Yes.
Okay, so just to, just to let you know, we would never attract anybody to these positions. If they only knew that they were working for three years. So, you know, the, the way it is, the way it is now, they're, they're, they're appointed to a, an indefinite term. And, you know, subject to just like any other employee, they can be removed for cause. But if we had a three-year term on any one of these, we'd never get anybody to apply. So like a building inspector goes into a town, they stay there for twenty or twenty-five years or thirty years or whatever it is. And, and they make it through all of that. They've got retirement, they've got all of that stuff. No one's gonna come here for three years. So I, I'm kinda.
Are, are you referring directly, forgive me for interrupting?
Yeah, that's okay.
Are you refer, are you referring directly to this role? Cause in our town charter, there are, there are different positions that ha- have that. So we would have to do comparables. And forgive me, I didn't come with that information.
Well, no, you can.
I didn't come with that information. To kind of do the comparables.
You can have a three-year term, okay? But you get reappointed in the, in the third year or the fourth year to the same job and your job goes for another three years. We, we couldn't possibly fill these positions if they were just three years and then have a nice day, adios, you're gone. So, so this doesn't make, this, this really doesn't make a lot of sense. That, that we're gonna reduce these to three years and then hit the road. So.
What does make sense? Three years and then review?
What makes sense to me is indefinite terms and, and a review by the town administrator to, you know, for, for people or, or. People in the positions that aren't doing their job.
Mr. Mead. I think what we should do tonight. Mr. Jeff is, is really just address the language that you have. The board isn't here to give you any advice on.
No.
The language or what your intent is or even really how this might work. But, you know, so I find ready for you to bring up an observation on how this, you know, might play out, but. Um, really, it's just to clarify what it is that you intend to do with the language. And I think what we're hearing is that your, your intention was that it would be three years. And then that would effectively act as a term limit. And then we would look for a new inspector. Is that? Is that your intention?
Uh, sure, sure. That, that, that was the intention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's just difficult because I feel like this conversation could have been had a long time ago, but, but I think there's, for some reason it can't, you know? Uh, but let's please continue.
Sure. Any, any, Mr. Jefferson?
Would this cause us any sort of a union issue or?
No, not, not a union issue because they're not a union position. I would think that the most likely issue you would run into is. If you fail to reappoint without cause, you can subject yourself to unlawful termination or MCAT or whatever. It is that, that could be applied to the situation depending on the employee.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Bruni, we do have a home rule charter expert here in the audience. I'm wondering if you might. Be open to a comment or question from Mr. Mar who's on finance committee and also has worked on the town charter extensively.
And bylaws.
And bylaws. He's, he's like an encyclopedia of, of Grafton legislation.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the master general law that, that kind of also speaks to the, the amount. Cause I did look, I did look it up. It's just. Didn't know what to expect for this particular meeting.
Sure.
And, yeah.
Understood. Well, this, maybe this is a good prep for town meeting then.
Yes, I'll be sure to have the, that quote for you.
So, so are you okay if Mr. Mark comes up and, and speaks to the petition?
Uh, no, no, I'm not sure if it's necessary, right? I'm, I'm not sure it's necessary. I don't want to waste the time.
Uh, I don't think it would be a waste of our time. I think it'll be a quick comment and probably a very useful. Bit of information for you. But it's up to you, really. It's your, it's your petition.
Uh, then, then go for it.
Alright, come on up there.
Hi, Greg Mar, thirty-six Ferry Street, past vice chair of the bylaw study committee, current. Chair of the finance committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of either of those, just experiences from that. Uh, this question is about Article eight of the charter. Which was transitional petition provisions that were put in place at the time of the charter and they were effective until such time. As they were superseded by other bylaws. Uh, since that time, they have been superseded by other bylaws. And in fact, section eight was repealed in its entirety by, excuse me. By fall town meeting by request of, uh, request to the legislature for special legislation. So I don't believe that has gone through yet. But the town has voted to effectively repeal this section in its entirety as it had no effect. And that's all I had for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Uh, so hopefully that was helpful to you, Mr. Bruni.
Uh, in layman's term, does that mean that section will no longer be in there?
Yes.
That's exactly what it means.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Uh, do you want to move on to the next one?
Yes.
Great.
Uh, the next one here I have is regarding the town administration shall provide an annual review of the job performance of town officers. Which shall at least in summary form be a public record. Any questions on that one?
I don't see any, any questions?
Not an employment issue, so.
Okay. Uh, alright, it seems like we understand that one.
Yes, alright. And then lastly is looking at town officers shall devote full-time to the office and shall not hold any other public office. Uh, elective or appointed nor engage in any other business or occupation that overlaps with the town office hours. And then they are listed Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, Tuesday, eight-thirty to seven, Friday, eight-thirty to one P M. Any questions regarding that?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
Um, Mr. Bruni, you're gonna have to explain this a little bit more because to be honest with you, I don't understand it. Is there a specific? Case that your town officers. Will hold no other public office elective appointed? I mean, wha- what does that mean?
I don't know. It's, it's exactly what's, what's under our town administrator. This is the exact same language, except it's being expanded to not just him, but. All officers, which in the charter is defined as those who run departments. So this is not my language, but it's ours.
So essentially what, what I think Mr. Bruni's, if I, if I might, Mike.
Please, please.
From our previous conversation, what, what Mr. Bruni is attempting to. To stop from happening is in this particular case, our building inspector is here in Grafton until say three-thirty. And then goes and is an inspector in another community. So this effectively stops that from happening.
So, okay, so maybe, maybe not, maybe that should, this should say shall not hold a public office in another town. Because they, because being a resident of Grafton, you can, you can't hold two elective offices, but you can be on multiple committees and. And all kinds of stuff, so.
So again, um. The language, the language is what it is.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, but that's the intent, correct? Mr. Bruni, that's what we, I think that's one of the things that came up at the, um, ask me anything. Was holding off, holding a position in a different town.
So, yeah, it's a little bit bigger than that. It's, it's, it's the feedback regarding delays around different things. So just making sure that those who work here are dedicated. What you do after your work hours is, is, is your priority. But just making sure that we have the availability for, for our folks.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this? Mr. Jefferson.
I might regret it, I don't know. Could you elaborate on some of that part-time work more, just for, I guess, a little more clarification? Um, only because you mentioned if that person were working until three-thirty here and then, you know, the. They'd still be doing their fully eight-hour day before moving over to an additional part-time job. We're not talking about somebody. Being on salary here until four-thirty, but only leaving at three o'clock to go pursue opportunities elsewhere.
Correct. So, you know, traditionally, it's my responsibility as town administrator to set the working hours of each employee. So some employees work outside of the scope. The hours that are listed for the town office are generally. When you will be able to find someone staffing an office and be able to get customer service. Um, that doesn't mean that every officer is in the building from those times. Um, so in the case of Mr. Burger, um, you know, it's not like he is working twenty-five hours a week because he leaves here at three-thirty. He starts earlier and then generally I get hourly reports or hours reports of him doing work on. Uh, either Saturday or Sunday. So, and I have that with several other department heads as well. Um, they generally don't hold a position in another community. They just have different hours to try to meet whatever life obligation they may have, which I do use to, um, you know. Try to make this a enjoyable work environment and a place where you'd want to come and, and work. So, and just to be clear, in order to hold a public office in another community, you do have to be designated as a special municipal employee. Which the town of Grafton has complied with. Does that answer your question, Andy?
Yeah, um, so it almost, I, I understand that Mr. Bruni is trying to. Apply this fully down the line. But it almost seems redundant if it's not currently allowed to happen anyways.
It, it just would make it so that any employee that has a second job in another community. Wouldn't be able to do that within the hours that this building is open.
Yep. Okay. Uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, anything else you wanted to discuss with the board, Mr. Bruni, with regards to your petitions?
No, I just, I mean, really, I just had a, a short amount of time to learn a lot of information to put it together.
Of course, yeah.
And, and, and in the future, I'll prob, I'll look to put together petition to see how we can more educate folks and see what we can provide them. Cause I feel like some of these changes could have potentially been made beforehand if necessary. Because some people have the information, others don't, et cetera. But I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
To be here.
Okay. Well, thanks so much for coming in. I really do appreciate it. And, um, yeah, we'll see you at town meeting.
Yes, be well.
You too. Alright, um, let's see. We're on. Amending this senior and veterans tax work off.
Will, is Mr. Fitzpatrick online? Do, if I recall correctly, did Amber tell us he was not going to be present?
Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick is not online.
Okay. I can briefly give you a high-level overview of what the intent is if you would like.
Sure.
Not to. Not to sway anybody or, uh, put my own support behind anything, but the intent of this. If you look at the parcel, um, which I became an expert in this afternoon after Mr. Jefferson asked some very pointed questions. The front of this parsh, parcel, uh, the, the, this is the Bolek Plaza, essentially is what colloquially everybody calls it. The front of the plaza is one parcel and the back is a different parcel. Front parcel is in the CB zoning, commercial business. The rear is in R-two zoning. What Mr. Uh, is it Fitzpatrick? Right, it is.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, sorry. I, I, the first time I said it, I was like, I don't think this is it. Mr. Fitzgerald is trying to do is open or change the zoning to allow for. A Minute Clinic type of, uh, or a, what do you call it?
Urgent care.
Urgent care, yeah.
An urgent care type of facility in, on that plaza. But currently the back building is not zoned appropriately. So that's all that really looks to change.
Got it. He also signed the petition. He lives in Upton.
There was more than.
I know, it's okay.
I know, there was more than ten.
His name was first on the list.
Alright.
Okay, so now on to abatement, thank you.
Okay, uh, yes, the work off abatement programs, over to you.
Yep, so essentially, these are the same programs that we've been doing, but instead of the fifteen hundred dollars a year cap, we're now allowed by master general law to go up to two thousand dollars per year. So in keeping with trying to give as much opportunity as we can to seniors and veterans. We need you to vote to update and adopt the amended program. Uh, and then on to the next step. So not a huge financial impact, but it does, for us, excuse me, I'm sure for the people that need that assistance, it is. Uh, quite a worthy change.
Wish we could do more.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to adopt the amended senior tax work off abatement program and the amended veterans tax work off abatement program as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, uh, next up we have, we're signing the Springtown, uh, meeting warrant. Um, any discussion on this one? If not, I'll take a motion. Pretty straightforward.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to close and sign the Springtown meeting warrant as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, next up we have a couple of debt exclusions. So the first is B V T.
Yep, so B V T is looking to do a debt exclusion for their. Roof repair on a section of the building. Excuse me. Um, and because of the timing of our town meeting. You actually need to vote to put this on the ballot before town meeting has actually voted on it. Um, otherwise you would not have another bite at the apple until the following year.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Sorry, I lost my. Uh, I move the board vote to approve the wording of the debt exclusion ballot question as presented. And to place it on the next local election ballot.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Mr. Jefferson, come on in.
What?
Hey Evan.
Yes, sir.
What, what would happen if this doesn't pass the town meeting vote, I mean, the, the town ballot vote?
Um, well, you're likely gonna pay it anyways because we are part of a charter with a bunch of other communities. And if the balance of those communities, um, vote affirmatively, then you're on the hook regardless of what you do here. Now, we could vote no, as could every other community. I've never seen that happen in practice, um, especially this doesn't seem like a crazy ask. Um, but it, but it is, it is possible that that would be an outcome too. But yes, if we're the sole dissenter. You're gonna, you're gonna be on the hook.
It would be less than ideal because we'd have to take it from other funding options, correct?
Correct, sir.
Wonderful.
Just remember that Andy and I had this exact conversation earlier, but I appreciate you walking me through that.
Like it's important for people to know.
It, it's great. Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, next up we have a debt exclusion to be put on the local ballot, uh, the election ballot. For a fire truck.
So we've talked about this numerous times, uh, with the board and Chief Matthew. I point to him, he's not in that chair, but that's where yours normally sits. And what we're looking for is a new ladder truck. New ladder truck currently is about two-point-five million dollars. We do not have the borrowing capacity. In our current levy to do that without doing that through a debt exclusion. The other interesting, uh, part of this borrowing is that the truck will not be ready for at least three years. It's three years currently. So you would authorize the borrowing of this truck at town meeting and then at the ballot. Uh, and then you probably would not see this in your tax bill for at least four years.
Nor would you see the truck.
Nor would you see the truck. Um, but what would happen is. But what would happen is just like we did earlier, when the truck was coming due, we would issue a ban for that two point five million and then either try to roll it into a different borrowing. Or bond it on its own, but that's. Down the road. We would see what what the market looks like at that time.
Any questions, comments? Alright, I'll take a motion.
I would just, uh Mr. Chair, just to delete um of proposition.
Where is that? I'm sorry, oh, actually in the.
Yeah, so the ballot question should read, it shouldn't read as actually as follows, just she would have to.
Oh, there's two of propositions, so maybe just as amended, as amended.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the wording of the debt exclusion ballot question as present, as amended. Deleting of proposition and to place it on the next local election ballot.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Andy, do you have any discussion?
Uh no, I think we're good on this one.
Rest of the board, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Motion carries, I'm sorry. Uh next up, we have select board reports.
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Jefferson. Um despite uh the AG's office requesting almost another month to review. The remaining three bylaws that were outstanding, we got word that the final three have been approved, no changes.
Great. Lot of uh effort went into that. I don't think people appreciate the kind of effort it takes to go through bylaws and charter.
Um yeah, I'll second that, um it wa- it was a. Talented, smart, dedicated group of individuals who who went through this thing. You know, just really, really focused on it, it is. As exciting as it sounds, you know, to get in there and and uh you know, you really have to get in there and and do a lot of reading and there's a lot of. Domino effects where, you know, one change here affects something over there and and whatnot. But it was impressive to watch this team work and, you know, just just chew through the 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 work that needed to be done. Uh methodically and and the fact that it came back without um any additional re- uh requests or comment from the AG's office. I think is just a testament to uh the solid foundation of work that that they put into it, it was, it, you know, it's. It's unexciting, it's unsexy stuff, it's, you know, that behind the scenes thing that that gets done, uh that that nobody cheers about, but. It it was, it was two years worth of hard work and um congratulations to that committee.
Absolutely.
I find it incredibly sexy, Andy.
I was gonna say something and I said, you know what, I'm leaving that one alone. This stuff, uh you know, both the charter and the bylaws though are incredibly important. They're really important uh cause they dovetail together.
Yep.
Uh we often, you know, there's just a ton of housekeeping because we make a lot of changes uh legislatively at town meeting and sometimes they don't get cleaned up. Sometimes they're, you know, so there's just so much work to sort of catch up on all of that, make sure it's all relevant. We adopt uh state statutes. Uh that supersede local ones and need to get rid of things and um yeah, I uh. Have a a lot of um respect for uh yeah, that whole group that went through line by line by line. To do all of that work, um it is so necessary. Um and you know, we run into oddities in our um bylaws and and charters all the time. You know, where we've gotta get in touch with town council and clarify things and um so. Yeah, having having that housekeeping done is is um, it's really, really useful.
Absolutely.
Maybe not sexy, but useful.
I find it sexy, I really. It it's it's an immense task. And you know, Dave and I would meet once a month to discuss it and and the knowledge collectively that the group put together. Was was amazing. Really know their ins and outs of those bylaws and and uh well thought out and well executed. So I'm I'm very grateful that that they did all that work.
Absolutely.
And I got that really cool bound book. Yeah, true, keep forever.
It's good stuff.
Yeah.
Uh any other board updates?
Uh Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna give a a thank you to Unibank. I worked with Dwayne for months on trying to bring the shredding. Um truck to Grafton, they've never had it here in our town and so it was a great event, it was really well attended, we donated a ton of food to the Grafton Food Bank. In conjunction with it and I just thank uh Unibank and especially Dwayne for for getting that set up for us.
Good shout out, nice, thank you, Unibank. Um I attended my first trustees, soldiers and sailors memorials meetings, uh there was a bunch of things discussed. Um flagpoles going into the old cemeteries, um wreaths uh for Memorial Day. Yeah, a couple of new memorial for Vietnam. So yeah, uh that that's a very active group, they're really passionate about the work that they do and I really appreciate it, um so um yeah, uh and uh. There um was some discussion about a um. Just a plaque for uh for Jim Gallagher, he was such a great guy and uh involved in so many things in town, so. I made the suggestion that maybe we could put it. On the high school right outside the auditorium, so as people gather for town meeting, you know, he was a such a fixture in town meeting. So anyways, um so yeah, good, good meeting, that was really a great group of guys. Alright, uh TA report.
Here we go. Alright, much of this is unchanged as the slow wheels of government turn. Georgia Road still design. Um really hoping to get something in the next, say, uh three weeks, hopefully in May. So that fits our timeline to be able to then go out to bid and and just get some of this working, but it is a uh. For a, as I've said this many times, for a small road, uh country road, it is very complicated and we wanna make sure that we get the drainage right. Milbury Street sidewalks, Paul was here at the last meeting, nothing's changed since your last conversation with him. Uh ARPA sidewalks, uh Paul updated you on that as well. The cupola uh is well underway, uh if you go by, you'll see the scaffolding up, but they are. Um you know, pulling stuff off and fixing stuff and doing what cupola restorers do. So we did uh did some aerial photography of it last week, we're trying to do that kinda weekly or bi-weekly to just monitor. Uh both for the grant and to be able to. Build a page for it uh on the website, which I'm pretty, pretty close to to being done with. This is the same update from uh REC, so we're currently in contracting with the OPM, I should have taken out the tomorrow, but you get the gist. Um ninety-five North Street, uh you just extended RDLA's contract. We did um come up with a pretty good plan, I just have to put pen to paper to be able to give to all of you and as soon as I get. A little lull, we will get that done and back over. And construction is is in progress at the Norcross Park Playground, some people had reached out to ask why everything is just sitting there, it is extremely muddy. It's been just, every time you get any kind of drying weather, you get three more days of rain. Um so we are trying to uh dodge those raindrops and and uh everyone involved in the project is very eager to get it done. We just can't, if we do it wrong now, then five years from now, everyone will complain that it's sinking and tilting and we don't. We wanna do it the right way, so we're gonna wait for the mud to allow us in there. Okay. Yeah, I added some stuff, I've been busy, Andy. What's that?
Allegedly.
Allegedly. So uh we did more uh, as far as you know, uh they they uh did more well sampling at the site of seventeen and twenty-seven Upton. I did just sign off on a whole bunch of application uh paperwork for the uh notice of intent. Uh which was submitted to conservation today, so uh got some. Some real movement happening there, pretty excited about that. Five Millennium um has their permit, I would anticipate at some point that they are gonna come to you and request some permit relief. Much like happened with.
That their building permit?
Yes, cause they are involved in that third party review.
Yep.
I would anticipate that they would go before the sewer commission and then the water commission before they come before. You folks.
Got it, so with the building permit in hand. They can um, we can add those units to the SHI, right?
Yep, and we will be having a meeting on that, um Fiona is back from vacation tomorrow. And uh that's one of the things that is on our list to circle back on. Pretty quickly.
So in terms of um the numbers, uh they're gonna do twenty percent, I believe.
Ye- that one is a forty R and it's twenty percent, correct?
Okay, so that should. Help us, right, because even then the market rate units, those will go against uh Grafton's um built unit count. But since we're adding twenty percent. If you get closer to the overall ten percent, right?
Right, exactly, yep. Correct.
Got it.
Alright. So. Library. Debacle that continues to keep on giving, so carpet installers were on site. I went down there to. They were only there for a couple of hours and uh they did not follow the carpet pattern. They also broke a number of our shelves trying to move them, which they were told not to touch. So, uh after some. Heated words. Uh they have been stopped, the insurance adjusters were back on site today and a new installer is coming. Uh this week to meet and figure out how to correct those issues. Um so the plan still remains to do half of the room properly. And then move the shelving and then finish the other half of the room, so I'm hopeful that this does not create any great delay. But it was less than ideal. Yes, sir.
Heated words with uh you and William or with library staff?
Oh no, uh myself and the contractor. And and then William in the country. I yelled at William a little bit too, not related to this. And it really, really wasn't deserved, but I felt like, you know what?
But he was there.
Somebody needs a good yelling. Yeah, exactly. So, uh yeah, that's. Is what it is for for right now. Um UPS, no real updates uh from our initial uh last meeting was with the building department and the fire department. It was reported to me that it went extremely well, um and that things are full steam ahead, so. Uh really excited to to see that momentum carry through. Uh one twenty-four Westboro Road, this is the same update as last time, we're on waiting for permitting. Uh fourteen Snow Road, we talked about this last time, there's no update since that EO HLC. Um I attended the MCPOA trade show, which is a fancy name for the police trade show. Um so I went with uh the chief, deputy chief, um sergeant and uh Mary Ann, who is the administrative assistant down there. And has many other hats as well, um so it was great, uh I I like to go every year, I like to see the new equipment, but I also. Like to see it so that when we have requests or needs or asks, I know what it is that we're talking about. So that was a a great time and I I greatly appreciate the chief uh and staff, including me each year. Um I've gone for about five years straight. And uh I really, I think it's it's valuable. Uh moving on, uh the following day, I participated in um preparing a PSA video at GC TV. It's actually not a PSA per se. The uh MPI, which is the Mass Police Institute. Has put together a training for chiefs, much like uh the fire chiefs do up in Stowe. And uh I was asked to participate with Chief Crepo on what it takes to create a good. Chief uh administrator relationship. Uh which I I felt very uh proud of, that we've been able to. Create that great working relationship, um and so we did about a thirty minute roundtable conversation about. How to navigate local government and how to just communicate effectively.
Cool.
Um and actually, they talked about going to that uh MCPO, MCPOA trade show and how I was one of the only town administrators that were. Were there and the chiefs would like to see more of us participate and and understand what what it is that they're they're doing. Let me back up one slot, uh we started our Grafton Police Union negotiations, so. Keep an eye out in the next uh couple of meetings, we will need to hold an executive session so that I can update you all on that. Yes, Andy?
I do wanna point out how funny it was that you had to go to the uh start of the police negoti- union negotiations. And then later that afternoon, shoot the video with the chief about uh the improvement and the, you know, how to how to keep that good working relationship.
Yep, yep, it was a busy day, it was a lot of police last week. Which I I love, um so I just wanna give you a quick update, stormwater continues to be. An issue throughout the community, I don't think it will ever not be community uh an issue, but I was out in the. Pouring rain last Thursday, maybe, was it, that was torrential. Um and uh so we were back out at Fisherville Terrace, I went with Tracy Sharkey, our building inspector. Um and Jan Taylor from our conservation department. And we did a full walkthrough in in the rain and were able to identify some more areas where we have concern and some other things that were not done. It was great to be out there with both of them and see their process and how they look at things differently, one from conservation, one from building. Uh I would like to give a a shout out to Tracy. Uh she was standing in the pouring rain with five guys with shovels while she pointed at things and and uh she was very impressive onsite. And I would do anything she told me to do uh onsite, very uh very nice to see. Uh we also met with the uh homeowner uh that we've been talking to in that area. Um and then we did another uh couple of stops on the way for some other kinda problem areas we've been having. So uh long story short, I think that the stormwater group and the I- that idea that we came up with is is working well. Um and I I I do think that it is important for multiple people to go onsite in the rain or in during the problem and see it. Firsthand, not just use uh an an engineering tool or whatever it is, so I was I was very happy with our folks. Did a great job.
I love that approach.
Yeah, it's.
We've just, you know, historically had lots of circumstances where there were uh issues that have popped up where we, you know. Employed engineering firms to take a look at things and whatnot and to actually have people turn up, you know, when there's a lot of rain onsite and look at it. In person. It's just incredibly important for lots of reasons, um you know, public confidence and letting people know that actually. We're out there in the rain too, looking at it, so that we don't have to rely on your pictures and whatnot, we're gonna get them ourselves and see what's going on. And we're actually gonna bring in, like you said, conservation and um you know, all the relevant departments that actually have expertise to to look at this stuff themselves, so.
Yeah.
Phenomenal.
I I from a management standpoint, I I like it too, cause I can see our staff in action.
Yeah.
And uh you know. Builds trust both ways, I think, that I'm willing to stand out there in the rain with you. But I also am not here to do, I have no authority to do anything as a town administrator, you'd think you would, but I I don't. Those two have the authority, so I just kinda stand back and. And uh you know, learn, uh so i- it's great, I I really am, I'm happy with the way that that's, that's going, I think we're gonna be able to make some. Some uh effective progress for people.
Right.
We met with Perrigan En- Energy, um so they are the consultant we use for our energy aggregation contract. So for those that's that's Grafton Energy, um so in the next uh coming few weeks, we are going to be going back out to the market. The authority to execute that does fly with me, so generally what we do, because the market is so volatile as we go out. Um and then you need to react within an hour or two of getting those bids, so generally what happens is I will then get the best bid. Sign off on it and then I come back and present to you folks uh what has happened. So, the the interesting thing that I uh will put together for you and I'll have a couple of graphs is. Um you know, over the life of the program, uh Grafton residents have saved about eleven million dollars on electricity, it's a fantastic program. And um in our last iteration, we signed a contract at ten point eight. Cents per kilowatt hour, uh literally two weeks before the market went to total chaos. So if you look at our rate, it's right here and the market is, I mean, just through the roof, twenty, thirty cents a kilowatt hour, it's amazing. And now it has kinda matriculated back down, so I don't think we're gonna be at ten point eight again, I think we'll probably be closer to thirteen cents. Um but we're also gonna be able to add some green energy options in, so that we won't just have no green option and. Full green option, there will now be a middle point. And so we've, we're looking to build that too. Um and we're gonna follow along with what other communities have done, where you start with, say, twenty percent green energy in that mid-ground and then you build that up over. Over years, so um that's exciting too, really, uh it's been on our mind for the past three years, waiting for the contract to come back up to. Kinda do a. do a little more uh green energy options in there. And last but not least, I met with council to review cannabis HCA updates, we do have one uh cannabis purveyor that wants to change the HCA, but of course, we have backburnered that for the better part of a year with all the changes at the CCC and kinda waiting to see how this shakes out, so. Um, what I will have for you in the next, say, thirty days is going to be an HCA update. Um, and ask for you to um change, I'm not gonna go into all the details of what uh, cause that we're still negotiating that, but um, essentially, it goes from being this multi-multi-page document to basically two pages, because everything's different now. Um, so, but that was, and again, speaking to our relationship with town council, I met with a person that does HCAs for communities all over the Commonwealth and had a wealth of, now I learned more in five minutes on that call than I did reading CCC updates for the entire year. Um, not to bash the CCC, I think their updates are great, but the this person is Evria uh is is fantastic, so that's all I have unless anyone has any question.
Just one, um, I like the um, the project pages.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, um, is there a plan um to sort of broaden out, do a review of all the projects going on and and prioritize them and figure out which ones are the most important ones to be more communicative with?
Yes, um, so we did start discussing that at a department head level
Okay.
of of how to, not really how to select, um, but how to if we, if we do our work on the front end when we're creating a capital plan.
Yeah.
Creating the project page is extremely easy, literally I hit create project.
Got it.
Creates the bones and then we go in to make some tweaks and add some more pictures. Like George Hill Road is a ground up, because it wasn't part of the capital.
Sure.
Um, and we do have some some projects, I'd like to do more with CPC
Yep.
build project pages for them too, cause I, that's taxpayer money.
Absolutely.
Um, and what's neat is that you can then se- select an archive date, um, so it doesn't show up on the active project page, it winds up being there in perpetuity, but um, you can select out, so I'm looking for every project that had to do with X. Uh, you can filter right out and 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 find it, so we are delving more and more into it, I sent you folks a uh kinda primer of what the George Hill Road project page is looking like.
Okay.
Um, I'm hopeful to be, have that out to the folks on George Hill Road by the end of the week. Um, but I I have a couple more things I wanna adjust.
Great.
So, but I I I do, I do think there's some tremendous value in that, in that tool.
Absolutely, uh, I'm a a big fan, um, and you know, that was something that came out of AMA. Uh, so great result for, you know, us to be able to respond to to public concern and and do something about it. And you know, this board has, like every board, that communication and regular updates, it's a difficult thing to do, so.
It is.
Yeah, um, if you could just, you know, keep, kiss, keep us up to date as you start building those out. And I'm not sure how we sort of promote those and turn people on to, you know, that's a good place to go.
One, one thing we did with the stormwater group that I I wanna carry through is we did that same uh, how do you contact the stormwater group? We did it on five different pages, let's. Um, cause you can't have everything on the homepage, right? We we have limited space on there. So, um, but I wanna do that because uh zone, both zoning and planning have done an excellent job with their projects on their project pages. But they're different, right? So that's all the, this is the public hearing and all the stuff, it's not the it it it's not us doing a public project where we can have photos and videos and all the other things that people wanna see. And 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 the, answer the questions that are immediately uh important to the people that that are funding these projects. So, just to link over projects from your page, my page. Will doesn't have a page, but let's say Will has a page, a whole bunch of different spots, um. I think is gonna be, is gonna be important, not just go through the transparency center.
Right.
Um, so, cause we we do have a pretty good amount of click through from the transparency center.
Yeah.
But um, but to more target, you know, the projects out. I think is good.
Great, thanks. Um, let's see, what do we got next, correspondence?
Yep.
Any uh correspondence, anybody wanna bring up? Uh, do we have meeting minutes?
Uh, resignations first, Mister Chair.
Miss Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Rob Paulsonelli from the Accessibility Advisory Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Mister Chair.
Miss Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Jim Davidson from the Planning Board effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry. And now, public comments?
Do we have any public comments? Anybody online, Will?
No hands on film.
Alright.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Miss Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from May twelfth, June ninth and June twenty, sorry, June twenty, June eighteenth of twenty twenty as written.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the meeting minutes?
Just wanna thank Amber real quick for, we're back into twenty twenty, so she's.
I think I was looking at the twenty twenty.
It's anachronistic, but she's making good progress and knocking these out.
Good.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, well, well, the, it's needed.
Yes, thank you, Amber. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mister Chair.
Miss Foley.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.